Good morning ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. This is Deepika Pandita signing in again for skill level test. Well, we do not have the regular industry tracks, but we have very, very special sessions which are going to be starting. The first session being Converging Industries. I have a set of lovely panelists with me and also a very knowledgeable and inspiring mentor and an independent consultant. Moderator for today's session is going to be none other than Raman R V. Welcome sir, good morning to you.
Very good morning, thank you so much.
Good morning sir. He is a multi-dimensional professional who has about thirty plus years of experience across general management, marketing, sports management and with special special social impact sector. He is post-graduate in commerce in an MBA and a diploma holder in advertising and marketing. He has been associated with leading multinational companies like RoboWii, Xerox, T D B Modra, Tensu, Toyota, Hitachi, Chili's and Lagdriya and also with wide variety of Indian companies like Weekendah, Himalaya Drug Company, Future Group, Nimasa Hatcheries, Tenrig, Padukone, Dravid Centre for Sporting Excellence, ILFS Sports Hub, Mediasys, Medibadi, Swasti C M F. His association with these companies has varied from being an employee to heading them as a consultant, mentor in formulating business plan, strategizing to the next level of the development and the growth for around and surrounding. The training and brand marketing planning has been also the part of his implementations. Combined with his knowledge of P N M management in marketing, branding, retail business of sports, social causes with a focus on implementation and execution. He has been able to add immense value to the organization and project he has been part of so far. So, welcome Raman sir. It's really great to have you here and have you moderate this session. Let me also take you through the lovely set of panelists that we have. We have from industry professional, Mr. Sashi Kumar Radhakrishna, Director Business Development at E D C Creative Technology Solutions. Welcome sir, very good morning to you.
Morning.
Morning sir. From institution professional, we have Mr. Thomas Dahl, Director and Dean, Stray School of Design. Morning Thomas, good to have you here. From industry professional, we have From industry professional, we also have Mr. Ruchir Shukla, Director Electric Mobility Program, Shakti Foundation. Good morning, Ruchir Shukla.
Good morning.
Morning sir. And the last industry professional, Mr. Devrata Ghosh, Director K P M G. Good morning sir.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning. So, we look forward to a very interesting session. Over to you Raman sir, thank you.
Thank you so much. That that long list that you read out is not just embarrassing, half of it is not true also, I think.
You're just being humble sir, thank you.
So, let me thank you Deepika, let me quickly make the best use of the hour we have. Let me introduce this wonderful set of panelists I have and I'll keep it brief. But being brief does not mean these are highly qualified and experienced people. For the sake of time, Mr. Ghosh, Mr. Devrata Ghosh is a director in K P M G. A vast experience across skill development, large scale program management, team management, business development, financial modeling, the list is endless. But a director K P M G says it all, I guess. Then we have Mr. Ruchir Shukla, who is the lead fully Shakti's electric mobility program. Again, a person with vast experience across multiple industries. And what he brings to the table really is possibly a hands-on understanding of industry convergence. Sashi Kumar, who is part of the E D C team, multiple years across science, management, strategic delivering, delivery of projects, marketing, a multi-dimensional person with vast experience. And last but not the least, Thomas Dahl, or as he said either ways, Dahl Thomas, who's who's joining us from across across international boundaries at five AM in the morning and who's the Director of Strategic School of Design, is setting up the Bangalore unit as we are speaking and understands designs across multiple, multiple industries and areas. Like I said, brief but brief introduction to the panelists. So, let me jump into the topic with the first thing I thought would be relevant is what does industry convergence actually mean? If I can start with Mr. Ghosh and and request him to say or give us an understanding of what in his opinion is industry convergence, what does it mean?
Thank you, Mr. Raman and good morning to all the participants and everyone present here. Traditionally in the past, possibly in the late eighties or even early nineties, what we have seen is that the focus of education is more compartmentalized, quote unquote, if I can call it. Therefore, your focus in terms of your education and subsequent experience are in a specific domain or in a specific sector. And you you tend to attain kind of expertise in that particular sector. But over a period of time, particularly two thousand ten onwards, or if I may say two thousand onwards, with this globe after the effects of globalization and more particularly Industry three point O, Industry four point O, when such concepts keep on coming, then the nature of work or the future of work is actually quite changing. If I look at from a perspective of my core skillset, that becomes more important rather than having some specialization. Because to execute in a particular work in a particular sector, the boundaries are slowly, slowly blurring. I'll give you possibly some examples. Today, if we talk about precision engineering, it's not only about manufacturing. It is applicable as good as in the aviation sector or maybe in the automotive sector as well. So, although the applicability part might be different, varying to sector to sector, but these things are more common across the sector. Similarly, we have already seen right from maybe mid nineties itself, how I T is playing a role, larger role, not only in the private sector case, but as well in the government sector space also. Particularly to ensure the governance, the ease of doing business and providing a common platform to people, those kinds of things. So, what I'm trying to say that the straight differentiation or straight compartmentalization between either from an education perspective or work perspective is slowly, slowly blurring out and you are more prone to have some basic skills or some core skillset, which will allow you to jump between sector as well as work on multiple sector. But at the same time, you tend to earn certain specialization when you are working in this, working on your sector. Another example before I stop, so both you and me, you'd agree that from a consulting world perspective, you tend to work on a multiple assignments, multiple different type of clients and there will be a horizon to which will cutting across. And those kinds of skillset help you to try even in a different client requirement in a different sector. And so, from that perspective, I would say convergence of industries is a happening phenomenon from knowledge perspective, from the way we work perspective and even the way we execute things.
Thank you so much. I think you've put this in perspective in a very comprehensive way. If I can jump to Thomas and from a design perspective, Thomas, correct me if I'm wrong, design by definition cuts across multiple industries, it's not industry specific. Design possibly from from times immemorial has always had convergence inbuilt into it. So, how do you see industry convergence from from this vantage point of a design expert?
It will be a same answer than Mr. Devrata Ghosh. Design has been specialized since the last, you know, we'll say thirty years. It has been more and more complex, more and more deep in each of the departments of design or product design that has split into I T, graphic design and then interaction design. So, it has been compartmented, specialized. And now we realize that a designer, when it's working on a project, is working on very complex project. So, it means when you're working as a, I don't know, a car designer, you're not only designing a car. You're designing the car, you're designing the way people are going to use it. You're designing the way people are going to interact with with all the instrument panels, but also with all the connectivity system, with the knob that is going to help you to navigate through the all the interface of the car. You are also working on the brochures. So, the the work of designers is coming, is becoming more vast. So, you need to be multi-specialized. And by doing this, you're also working with a lot of specialists. You're working with engineers, you're working with marketing, you're working with electronics, you're working with a lot of different kind of guys. On the design is most of the time, you know, all these different specialists that are working with you, all have their own K P I's, they all have their own, you know, specific aim to reach. The engineers, mostly the engineers' aim will be to be sure that everything works, okay? So, in order to achieve this, they would never take any risk. They will not change anything, you know, like this has been working for twenty years, let's do it again, okay? But if you look at the other way, the designers' challenge is to make things change. The marketing guy would be to make things lower cost and all this kind of stuff. So, I'm making it very, very caricaturistic approach. But so, the designer's job is to be sure, to assure that all these different aim that are all aiming at different objectives. One is to reduce the cost, the other one is to be sure that everything works. The other one will be that the millimeters between two parts are well achieved and things like that. To be sure that everything works together. So, I would say that the designer work today is to be a kind of glue, to be sure that all the objectives of everyone are matching together into one project. And actually, the designer work now is transforming into being a translator. I understand what the engineer says and what the engineers want and how can I translate it into something that can also match with what the marketing wants and what with the designers want and what with whatever the other stakeholder will want. So, design has evolved into a more complex work where we are centralizing all the information in order to mix it into one project that fits all the different participants of the project. And it's becoming more and more complex because projects are themselves becoming more complex. Before, when you were making, you know, a small object, one designer could do it alone with engineers, of course. But now, when you're working on a project, you've got ten engineers working, will be taking care of the interface, one will be taking care of the electronics, the other one will be taking care of the machines and all this kind of stuff. So, you're multiplying the number of people you're working with and it's becoming very, very complex. So, designer deal with all this complexity and be sure that all the aims of all the actor of every project are working on only one direction, which is one project in order to be sure that everybody is going to pull the rope in the same direction.
Understand.
It's evolving very, very fast and making a big, big difference in the job, in the work. Because now designers, you know, ten years ago or five years ago, were needed on these skills, skillset of design, where you need to be a good designer. Okay, so understanding the project, understanding the processes and making good work as a designer. Now, designers are more and more becoming like project manager kind of work and they need to understand people also, work as a team managers, work, you know. So, the soft skills of designers are as much important nowadays than their hard skills. So, the job itself have moved on the mentality and the 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 teaching of design has evolved into a biggest, bigger part of soft skills into the jobs designers in order to to face this team managing part of design. Designer is going up in the hierarchy in the in the projects. Now, you've got a lot of designers that are that are more project leaders and growing very fast on the hierarchy because of his capacity of being able to bound everybody together on one line that is a project.
Understand Thomas, I think, I think you've you've put in the perspective of design which, you know, how it's it's evolved across over the times and how it's becoming larger and bigger than what it used to be. Can I, if I can bring in Ruchir at this point in time and to build on something that Thomas said towards then, how does somebody, how does this change for somebody in the in the context of industries converging? Converging of industries is a reality as we have established. How does somebody skill themselves to be prepared or or to take on the converging industry scenario?
Thank you, Mr. Raman. Let me just quickly take a, you know, small introduction about the organization I come from, Shakti Foundation, with the motive of bringing the climate change in terms of reducing the carbon emissions and bringing the temperature down is the sole motive and those kind of projects we find. While we touched upon this topic, there's an enormous amount of collaboration now which is happening. If I for the moment focus it in the mobility space, smart mobility as one leg. Today, this space is bringing the core sectors which we know that like power sector or energy sector. It brings the core of electrical, electrical competences or academia, mechanical, automotive, software solutions, everything connected together. It can go deep as much as possible on the complexity size as well as it has a breadth available for the people, our friends and colleagues, our youngsters who are even in diploma or skills. Because this is such a new billions of dollars of opportunity opening up. When I say mobility, next-gen mobility, it's mobility on the ground. Primarily, it's all fueled through the more efficient, energy-efficient solutions. So, therefore, we are talking when mobility is on the ground, in air or water. Any media which makes physical movement from point A to point B is all we are talking about today. And therefore, there is a very good convergence which we are seeing of all these skillset, including even communication where we talk about increasing content of software. Therefore, cyber security becomes very good, important aspect of it, right? Connectivity, the boost to the bottom of the pyramid in terms of lot of new services, support system is going to be built up. So, huge, huge employment potential opportunity for the youngsters who are a fresh, want to join state as you know, after their ten, ten plus two or diploma or graduation, whatever stream they are coming from. Any liking of the individual has a role to play. Be it, as I mentioned, mechanical, electrical, automotive, power electronics. Otherwise, many of these streams used to be in the baskets in the previous couple of decades, if we see. Now, everything has come together and everything going hand in hand, as Mr. Thomas well said, as part and parcel overall ecosystem solution, which need to be addressed by virtue of design. Design of not the product but design of total ecosystem or design of solution per se, mobility solution per se. So, what I see youngsters and people who are adapt, ready to adapt for the change and get into a skill enhancement, they can leverage any of their liking. I forgot to mention one very important aspect, electrochemistry, right? Which has been earlier a combination in some of the solutions like telecom or solar as a stationary product. Now, it's in the car. Thermal management has got a very good solution today for the, for example, icy cars on the road. For a moment, they are polluting, that's we all know that. Beyond that, the noise they add and they're like on heater on the road. Like each car is few kilowatt of heater on the road. If you take a thermal imager camera, few hundred meters up sky, you'll find a completely red hot line on the road. Not, I'm not talking the taillight you see generally when on the road, but it's the thermal profile of the vehicle. And especially in situations where the eighty to ninety percent of year, you are turning on A C. Therefore, cars are burning that much of heat on the road, adding to the, you know, temperature. So, overall, a great ecosystem bridging together all sorts of options, young to mid-age to old people. Anybody who wants to play the game, he has a role to play. Thank you very much, I'll stop here.
No, no, thanks, thank you, I think, great. If I can get in Sashi here to to build on what Ruchir just mentioned about skills, would you say Sashi that in the converging industry scenario, soft skills are are becoming more relevant than they were before and soft skills is going to be critical for a youngster to be able to take advantage of industry convergence?
Right. Thank you, Mr. Raman and fellow panelist. It's a very interesting discussion on convergence. So, as I'll address your question, but I thought I'll also set a context to your question and also to some extent the discussion we have today. So, convergence is what normally think people say is opposite of divergence. So, I had attended a very interesting talk by Professor Mashilkar, a former Director General of C S I R, probably in late nineties. And his talk was very interesting at the Indian Institute of Science. And he said, there is borderless science and borderless engineering. And these borderless science and borderless engineering will lead to huge innovations in in this convergence of different sectors. And these sectors will spawn off different industries and you know, the way, you know, we have a lives and the products designed for for our lives. So, I think the biggest inventions have also been happened because of convergence. So, you take the present COVID scare or the pandemic which we are all facing, the PCR reaction or the PCR test which has been done, which is a polymerase chain reaction. The polymerase chain reaction was, you know, discovered by a biologist called Karimulis and he was assisted by a mathematician to, you know, elucidate that reaction and standardize that reaction and for which he got a Nobel Prize. So, I think all big innovations and all big inventions have happened because of convergence. If you do deeply analyze those inventions or innovations. The other important thing is when we are talking of Industry four point O, as one of our panelists, Mr. Devrata, mentioned, the new professional and also related to soft skills, what you said, the new professional. So, if I'm a manager in an Industry four point O setup, if I'm a manufacturing manager, so I should have traditional management skills, I should have manufacturing skills, CAD CAM, computerized manufacture, computerized design. I should have, you know, knowledge in A R, V R because you will be actually, you know, conveying this or training your workforce using A R and V R technologies or M R technologies. I would also want to bring in specialists. So, let's say I would have material specialist, I would have a special manufacturing specialist. So, if you see convergence is going to be a reality, it is it is going to be there. And I think the fellow panelists in the previous tracks mentioned, apart from your core skills, please acquire additional skills which supplement your core skills. And this was across all the panelists, we have forty tracks, I think, from, we have finished almost thirty of them. And I think across all panelists said, apart from your core skills, please acquire additional skills which can supplement your core skills. So, convergence is here to say. So, for for people who want to get into convergence thinking or convergence mindset, I, the way I would put it is put your core skill as one, if you think of a Venn diagram, in one circle, put your core skill, in a second or third circle, put your supplementary skills and you will see the cost or the convergence and that's where you will make your mark and that's where you would like to specialize. And I think all of us have to start, this is kind of an empirical model for people to think. All of us should start thinking in this way and coming to especially soft skills. I think convergence will happen and soft skills is the glue to have, to make convergence happen.
Nice, nice.
Because you are actually interacting with, as I said, if you are a production manager, you're talking to a material specialist, you're talking to an A R, V R specialist, CAD CAM, C A E. And finally, all of these converged in helping you make a product or a service. So, I think it is the soft skills which will actually bring, and that's a glue which will bring all these skills together. And you have to bring in the right frame of mind and the right questions to the right target. I think Thomas also mentioned, design manages like a coordinator. So, when you are in in a convergence sweet spot, you are also coordinating multiple facets and multiple technologies with multiple skillsets. So, I think soft skills is very critical in bringing all of them together.
That's great, I think soft skill is the glue, is very well put. If I can get back to Mr. Ghosh and specifically with the reference to, let's say, make it relevant to the youngsters out there. Convergence is reality, soft skills is the glue, people have to be multi-dimensional. And let's say, let's make it immediate, the pandemic has, the coronavirus situation has brought upon the inevitability that people are saying, whatever job I get, I'm ready to do because jobs are being lost, etc., etc. In this sort of a scenario, Mr. Ghosh, how does a youngster sitting out there qualified in a certain stream make himself relevant for doing something else which is actually not qualified for? How does he actually go about this task?
So, see, not only, of course, pandemic had made the overall situation more worse for us looking for a job or with a certain background, you're already looking for a job. But I would say even without pandemic, the job market has started looking for a different kind of thing, okay? So, as a student, what should I do? So, if I am pursuing any undergraduate courses, apart from my core subject, now various education institutions have come out with a kind of option that what are the top-ups so that you can kind of do along with your main course. So, when I say top-up, these are not traditionally your regular curriculum. This might be more either from a soft skill perspective or from your I T skills perspective, which we say more like a combination of finishing school kind of concept. Now, if you are approaching the job market with this additional options, let's say, I'm a commerce graduate, but at the same time, I have learned, I'm just giving a broad example, at the same time, I have learned tally or at the same time, I have learned any accounting software along with my courses. So, your acceptability as well as your adaptability to the actual industry situation improves much more. And I think that will definitely improve your ability to get a job more quickly. If I talk about particularly from this pandemic perspective, I think there are other factors like how comfortable you are with the use of tech. I'm talking about more from a mid-level job or entry-level job perspective. Things like how comfortable you are in handling technology, how comfortable you are in talking to clients over an online mode or in a virtual mode. Physical thing, obviously, we all understand that a face-to-face relationship creation and doing a project or doing a business is different thing and doing it online is a different thing. So, your ability to, as I mentioned, the manage the use of technology, convincing power over on a virtual platform, how you interact with client, how you react under stress situation because you are already going through lot of stress from a mind space perspective, from a quarantine perspective and many other things.
Yeah.
And if you see these days, whenever I open LinkedIn and other things, I saw youngsters are actually utilizing their time by doing various available online courses. Most of them, they're taking benefits of the free courses by Coursera or Udemy or Unacademy and other things. But I think that's the best use of time where people are making in this pandemic because those additional acquisitions of additional skills is definitely going to help you in the market. If I, if I, if I can just bring a global example here, so in India, that kind of concept is not very popular. But let's say for a country like Singapore, where they have concepts like skill credit. So, if you're a working professional or if you're creative during the period of your employment, if you are acquiring some additional acquiring some additional knowledge, uh, there is a public job portal which will actually help you to further counsel and fund a part of your career.
True.
Those kinds of initiatives actually, uh, kind of incentivize you. But to definitely, to summarize whatever I have said, that apart from the traditional courses or curriculum that you are reading, you have to have certain kind of additional skill set, uh, to be more acceptable from the employer's perspective. I'm sure Ruchir and Sashi will agree with me later on, maybe in their comments, they can also clarify this. Thank you.
No, no, absolutely. And skill credit is, yeah, Singapore example is a great one. Uh, if I can keep going in the same circle, it just makes it easy. So Thomas, again, I would, from your perspective, how does a youngster get ready? Uh, you, 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 you very wonderfully articulated that our designer is much more than what he used to be going up higher up the hierarchy. Uh, in general, how does a youngster equip himself to the converging world today? What does he have to do really?
So for us, um, you know, in strats could have designed, we are, uh, doing this for a long time. Because as I said, the, the evolution of, uh, of this convergence is a job that designers are doing since a decade or two. Okay, that's their job is to be the converging point of all the others. So this is something that is not very new for us, for design, that you need to converge. And you know, to converge, you need these soft skills and all those skills together. So in order to make sure that all these students are ready to, uh, to achieve this kind of, uh, multidisciplinary skills, we are making sure, uh, in the school, in the in strat, that, uh, we are achieving what we call a T-shaped profile. Okay? I'm going to explain what it is. A T shape, so you know, the T, T shape is like that. When you're training, uh, a specialized guy, you know, like an expert, you're training a I shape, you know, a vertical shape. It means the expert will know everything from A to Z on a specific project. Okay, he will be super focused on something. Okay? This is what we call a I shape. Okay? But also, you've got some, uh, courses that are training students to be generalist. Okay, whereas they will know from A to D on multiple, multiple, multiple different, uh, subjects themselves. Okay? And nowadays, what we just discussed altogether is that we realize, and in design, it has been, this was since a long time, that people need not only to be very skilled in one, one their particular subject, like engineering, design, marketing, whatever it is. Because they need to be very skilled with this, this, uh, courses. But at the same time, they need to have a lot of generalistic, um, knowledge about everything else. Like a little bit of, uh, I don't know, electronic, a little bit of, uh, computer, a little bit of manufacturing process, a little bit of new technology, a little bit of this, 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 this. Okay, so in order to be a good designer, you need now to be first a good designer. But you need to understand everybody that you're going to work with. Uh, this is what we call a T-shaped profile. And in order to achieve this, schools need to, uh, stop teaching. They need to stop teaching. Okay, they need to mentor students into a project phase with different objectives and different people coming from different industry. There is, uh, you've all noticed this, there is a new education plan for India that is im- implementing this already a little bit. And this multidisciplinary, um, stuff is coming. So this is going underway, but this is what you need to achieve when you're a student, in order to get the best job. You know, Google, Amazon, all these big, big companies are now looking at this kind of profile when they are hiring. They are not looking at any more experts and things like that. Because an expert is like a, a, a racing horse, you know, with blinders on the side. They don't see what's happening on the side. So all the sample that Mr. Sashi was speaking about, you know, about the mathematician that was working with a genetician to find something. This is not happening if you're not looking at anything else than what you are looking at, uh, as an expert. So this is something that is needed today. The world is, as I said at the beginning, the world is becoming more complex. You can't just be blindfolded on what you do only. You need to open everything. See what, what creativity is. In order to have one ID, one domain, you need to look at something else. Uh, in order to get the creativity of this domain into yours and matching it. Okay? This is what convergence is all about. So in order to get ready, to get ready for this, there is only one thing that need very, very important for student is curiosity. Curiosity, you know, uh, when you're studying something about poetry. Okay, uh, and let's say, you're, you're studying poetry. Poetry, you know, in order to have some poetry, you need to have some rhythm in your, in your verse. Okay? You need to have some architecture. This is making music. So you learn about what's music and you need to ask yourself question, why, why, why? And then this why will come from different directions. And this is this game of asking yourself why, trying to find yourself answers about the core, um, reason why things are done this way. That will help you, uh, the plasticity in your brain, because your brain is very plastic, beautiful machine. But you need to train your plasticity to get the habits of, okay, this is done this way because another thing is done this, the other way and interacting with this. And you need to understand the full ecosystem around one concept, around one object, around one idea. So my advice is to get ready for the convergence, to get ready for this T-shaped profile, is to be curious. And to be curious, it's, uh, first thing is to stop you watching YouTube or Netflix. You know, watching YouTube for the people that are falling, you know, the, the bloopers or all this, uh, stupid stuff that are time wasting on the, on the line because it is nine, nine, ninety percent of the traffic on YouTube is to look at this kind of stuff. But start looking at, uh, more interesting, um, speech. You know, to, to start to, to, to ask themselves questions and to try to find themselves answers. This is the kind of skills that people are going to, uh, to need tomorrow in order to hire them. You know, and I, and I'm just finishing with this. In Amazon and all these big gaffas companies now, they are not looking at your, um, your graduation. They are not looking if you're coming from MIT, they are not looking if you're coming from Harvard, they don't care. They are not looking if you're coming from, um, informatics, if you're coming from IT, if you're coming from biotechnology, they don't care. They are taking fifty guys, they are putting them in a room, they are giving them a problem to solve. And the guy that are solving the problem got an interview or got a job.
I understand.
You don't, you don't. And they don't care what you're coming from. So you need to have this kind of plasticity of mind first to be able to understand the complexity, understanding the complexity is the most important skills that you need to have tomorrow. And from that, you need to be creative from it. So start learning, and not only one, but as Mr. Sashi Kumar said, you need to learn all the skills, the, the, the side skills, the side, um, knowledge that are surrounding your own core, uh, um.
Skill.
Field, uh, to get, to get the tape yourself. Schools are supposed, they are responsible, they should be the one doing it. But not a lot of them are doing it. As far as now, as we all know, they are making race course, horse, you know, like, uh, blindfolded experts. And, um, it's very rare to find good schools making this opening. It's changing.
Understand. So I, I hear you. I think curiosity is, is something that is, is a great way to sum up in a, in a single word. Uh, for positivity of time, if I can jump to Ruchir and, and ask, you, you mentioned something at the beginning itself on which Mr. Ghosh and Thomas built upon, uh, and what, that's what we are talking, soft skills, very important. But do you think there is something beyond soft skills that a youngster can actually do today? The new education policy possibly touches upon it in a little way. But is there something specific a youngster can do to be ready for the converging world?
Thank you. Uh, the very first thing on the line is each of us and youngsters especially should know how to use their hands, legs, minds together. So skills which make them use their hands, fingers, do something really practical on the ground. So that there is a base created, first of all. You know, whenever we have to make a building, it's very important we first have a strong base. So today, in present scenario, most of the time we observe, we quickly, as well said by a couple of our panelists, we quickly get into the virtual world only and do not create a strong foundation. We shouldn't be ashamed. I have always learned many of the leaders which I'm referring here who have told whatever walk of life they have been when they were leading the tech organizations. Many of them have told in group meetings that they took few days off, went to the mechanic shop, when I was in Delphi for ten years and then Mahindra Electric, Reva, all the places, even Chetan for that, just to code. He just post the, you know, clothes and just go inside the car. Where is that? Where is that fire? We have to discover it. It necessarily not to be only in automotive or one specific field. Enormous. So a sharp eye, keen observing mind, having trust whatever we have. First of all, you need to have a trust and strong belief with absolute fearlessness. That we are here, we are here for good and we are going to be making some impact. That's what is the first thing we need in our, all, all youngsters. And then get ready to make your hands dirty. Do whatever in front of you, wherever your heart beats, go do it, couple of days. Don't watch only on videos or, they are good as a giving a reference, but go try it. I've been a martial artist in my life and, you know, very well said by, by my coach. Everybody dreams seeing Jackie Chan or Bruce Lee movie that, hey, this is the way I make a kick or punch. He says, as soon as you get that feel, get out of your bed or whatever couch you are sitting at. Stand properly and try it out. See the gap and then practice. Gap is only going to be visible when you are really on the ground, not when you are imagining along with the video. You don't see the gap there. And that is where I think very strong, uh, you know, determination and, you know, sharp observation lies in. Few other things which I just add here, while imagining, uh, you know, solutions or anything to dream is very strong ability one need to have. As I said with the analogy of martial arts, in instantaneously trying to next phase, convert it by doing some way to accomplish it alone and, you know, rally along, along with the partners or party. So you learn lot of team building abilities with, a couple of us starts up, start up by doing that very good. Such culture need to be popularized starting from early days in the schools. Which is what I think in the academic or education system. Beyond the education or standard lectures on fundamentals which are very good available on tubes, right? We can start interacting of practicing that knowledge through the conversation, which was at time age-old style have been too. A teacher or mentor and mentee cross-questioning to really get to the various meaning and various applications of that small knowledge, which has a large impact in terms of applications. I think those are the couple of things which I would say very critical, apart from all the subject matters which we have discussed in the last, I mean, previous discussion. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, Sashi, in the, in the, if I can take in the interest of time, since we are running short of time. Uh, there is, there are questions already coming in. So I'll put the first question to you and you can use that as a basis to, uh, figure out, and this is a very specific question which is nice, which is, what are the areas to look out for from converging industry where the youth will find opportunity? So they want specific areas rather than broad strokes that we are possibly talking about. Saying what are those areas to look out for, uh, so that they find job opportunities there. Sashi?
So you're on mute, Sashi, sir.
Sashi, you're on mute.
Sorry for that. Yeah, I think, I think that's a good question and, uh, uh, I think fundamentally, uh, you know, we, you need to learn how to do convergent thinking first. Only then you can develop convergent skills. Uh, in our experience, you know, we built a whole business based on convergence. We do museums and experience centers. So there are multiple skills which converge. So we are talking to a civil engineer, then an architect, to an interior designer, to an AV technologist, to content development, to integration. And once, once all these, these fuse, we get an overall experience. Right? So I gave you this practical example because, uh, we went, we went very interesting situations when we discuss in projects. Uh, when we talk to some person, let's say an architect, we'll say, okay, uh, there is a particular intervention coming there. Uh, many times people say, okay, that's not my field, that's somebody else's to do. And what happens is, I think that's the first danger. When, when you are in a project or when you are in a discipline or in a job with convergent thinking, as somebody mentioned, the curiosity and the, the toolkit of convergent thinking has to be in place. Because you can't switch off yourself and go back and say it's somebody else's jobs. The moment you putting yourself into that situation and realize that to get the end product is a result of multiple skill sets and multiple convergent thought processes. So my, my, uh, from, from our experience, what I can tell youth here is uh, it's there when, don't expect that it's an elusive thing, some line somewhere. It's there in everybody's career today, everybody's workday, workday life. It, it, it's not an isolated experience. It is there everywhere. And what we are trying to tell, and I think that's a theme of today's discussion, we are seeing convergence now happening at the speed of light at workplaces, at technologies and innovations happening. Convergence is no longer a topic which can be discussed in isolation. It's happening very rapidly, very fast at the workplace. So, uh, answer to a specific, uh, answer to the question is, look out for, if your core skill is, let's say, uh, you know, CAD CAM and engineering, look out for, you know, uh, analysis and, you know, testing, all this, you will use convergent skills and convergent tools. So the more you, faster you acquire those skills, you become a well-rounded personality or, or, or a skill resource in that workplace. So, uh, that's a specific answer I can have to that question.
So, so I think, I think what, what is, I think what, what is being asked is, can be specify area? So i- is it an area like fintech? Is it an area like sports nutrition? Uh, I think we are all making the point that this is a way of life, it is not about one specific industry. But I think specifically what, what, what the question is, can we identify areas? And I can think of a few examples. Mr. Ghosh, can you think of a few examples beyond, not beyond, like fintech? Sports nutrition, nutraceuticals, are there more areas?
Yeah, fintech is definitely one. Second area would be possibly health analytics. Third area would be education technology, what we call it, edtech. Then fourth will be agri-tech because increasingly we are seeing, uh, application of technology in the agriculture domain. Uh, then, uh, fifth would be, uh, the precision manufacturing and, uh, in those area. But, uh, there, there are more. In fact, uh, there is a large focus on, uh, health area apart from health analytics also. Like, uh, the health infrastructure digitization, there are concepts like digital twin, which is also coming in, which is more like a, uh, what should I say, optimization tool for a product or for a process. So, uh, those are the expertise area and the horizontals would be definitely, as all of the panelists said, the critical thinking, problem solving and designing.
Hey, so, but that's, that's a very specific one.
I have a quick point to add that.
Just, just one point.
Be more specific, sorry. Uh, so let's say if you're a doctor today, I think a doctor ten years down the line uh, should have a good, you know, AI and decision tool analysis skills. Because, uh, that, that's, that's a future, you know?
Sure, sure. I think we, we have a, so, so.
If I can just add something, uh, I think the, trying today to figure out which is the area where you need convergence is going to be wrong because, you know, the world is changing super fast and even faster every day. And we don't know what are the job that are coming in five years. Okay, so students are training today for what's coming in five years. And we don't have an answer to give. What I'm, what I'm going to say is that every job should have this complexity, uh, convergence. Because every job, you know, in every job you can make huge mistake if your job. If you look at the plastic. If you look at the plastic bags, you know, plastic bags is an issue. So we ask an expert of plastic bag to say, what can we do in order to avoid the plastic bag? They say, stop the plastic bags. There was no economic expert, there was no logistic expert involved into this. So the decision was an expert's decision, stop the plastic bag.
True.
Is that in order to to to, there was a gap, it was the missing things, the plastic bag itself. So came up some other solutions around the plastic bag to carry things, which are this proven uh fabric stuff. But this fabric is made of plastic and these bags are even easier plastics than the on normal plastic bags. So the result is worse. So whatever, what I'm saying that when a decision is taken by someone that is only an expert. It's most of the time a bad decision. And after that, on the project, it's gotten bad. And this is for all the departments, not only for the one that has just been mentioned, which has more known today, so more advanced. The one that are uh making a job or where we can put a name on a job already today. But all the all the jobs are going to be needing these T-shapes profiles and this curiosity and all.
Sorry to button Thomas, we we are running short of time and we have a couple of more questions.
Yeah.
So if we can, if we can keep the answer short, it will help, uh Ruchir. I think one interesting thing that emerges is, is technology the glue? Or is technology a prerequisite for convergence? Uh if so, how does one approach this whole thing? Is technology an essential ingredient for convergence?
Uh short answer is yes, we are in an era of technology and technology per se has so many dimensions. So uh and it's it's not a big hurdle to cross through. It's like today's life, like uh two, three decades back, getting bit computer literate was minimum required, right? So today, in terms of technology use of AI data analytics, some making sense out of that. If not, re- really a big, you know, enabler for that, but at least ability to connect with such people as clue. What I think is Thomas well said, is really required. And I I in my opinion, it's big yes.
Super. Uh quick question and answer, Sashi. Uh if technology is 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 a is a vital ingredient of convergence and with what Thomas said so beautifully. Uh that you don't even know what the problem is going to be five years from now. Uh how does a complete non-science, non-tech, non-engineering person? Even get ready for this world out there, but technology is vital, but the problems are not even known today? How does a youth get ready for that?
Uh I think to repeat what I said, first is curiosity, because as I think uh. We we can't have those blinders with us anymore. We we need to uh you know, remove these blinders, so curiosity is one. And always a a general interest in understanding what are the related disciplines which are involved in your area of, you know, expertise. Uh you cannot, when there were situations where you said there is an expert for everything and it is that expert's job to do it. I think gone are those days. Gone are those days, uh with especially industry three point O, transitioning to industry four point O. You need to have uh all these skills. So it's like just saying, uh Mr. Arish, I have a good example to tell you. If you are an accountant today, you cannot say, I don't know how to use computers or computing. So you need to, and that accounting is done through ERP and accounting packages. So that is the first level of convergence which happened fifteen or twenty years ago. The next level of convergence will be so- something else. So it's a moving target.
Sure.
Be curious and look forward to it.
Super. I think, Mr. Ghosh, a specific question, if all of us and and the questions are also, if convergence is a reality. What is the missing link in our education process that doesn't equip us to to be ready for this? What what is the missing link?
I think there are three aspects to it. One is the the way the current content and curriculum have been designed. So uh by nature, as of now I'm talking, before, of course, as you mentioned, NEP is trying to address this when uh extent. But as of now, uh the content and curriculum uh is not really focusing on the multi-stream convergence direction. At least at the uh school education level or higher, or even let's say higher secondary level. There is some extent it is being done at the higher education level, but at the school level, it is not happening. A second is, I think, the the acceptability among the students as well as amongst parents. So uh it's little easy if we talk from students from a uh. The entire one city perspective that they understand this convergence and other things. But if you go back to the entire three or entire four cities, parents or students may not be very much familiar with such concept. And they will still prefer to go for the traditional education. So uh there is a need to popularize this concept, number one. Number two, there is a need to change in the content and curriculum right from possibility. The uh the secondary and higher secondary education levels. Two more things I would like to add, one is the standards and assessment part of it. The current standards and assessments, particularly the assessment part, possibly doesn't encourage a student to become multi-dimensional. Whatever they are doing on their own at this point and their own interest perspective. As well as the the, if I talk from the workforce perspective, there needs to be a continuous focus on the continuous professional development part. So that upskilling and upskilling can happen on a continuous basis.
Understand. Since since that's super, that's very specific. Since we have dearly run out of time. Uh it would be great to end by by, you know, if there is one, one attribute, one word. That you would give to the youth to be ready, just one word. Uh Thomas used the great word called curiosity. Uh is there one word, one attribute, one skill? And that's, when I mean one, I really mean one. Each of us, if we can put that upfront, we can conclude this in a in a in an interesting, creative way. Uh start with Thomas, since he led this, one word Thomas.
Well, I used the one curiosity before, I will add uh agility.
Agility and curiosity.
Evolving, of evolving through what's happening to you, you evolve with it, you know, you learn new things from every situation of your life, agility.
So agility and curiosity are patented by Thomas, Ruchir.
Uh I'll say hard work supported with fearlessness. Don't look at result.
Hard work supported by, okay, done. Uh Sashi?
Uh convergence happens with lateral thinking, so in in improve and increase your lateral thinking abilities.
So lateral thinking, hard work, curiosity, ability, Mr. Ghosh?
I think the most important factor, in my opinion, is the adaptability part of it. You may have enough resources to learn, but until and unless you adapt yourself to the situation, things not going to change.
So so there you are, guys, if if at all, you can take cues from this, adaptability, agility, curiosity, hard work. I think uh that's the whole gamut. Thank you, gentlemen. This has been fascinating. I wish we had more time, but Deepika will kill me if I exceed it even by a minute. Uh so back to you, Deepika.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ram. We we had an interesting session and I'm sure everyone is now prepared. And is preparing for all the skill set that you all have, the veterans have mentioned here.